Greetings everyone and welcome to the Saco City Council meeting from Monday, August 3rd, 2020, beginning at 6:30 PM with the call to order. Under item two, we have recognition of members present. Let the record reflect that all council members are present and the city administrator. With that, we'd like to invite everybody to join us in the Pledge of Allegiance. The flag is behind the city administrator, Brian Keanrath. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We are now up to item four, general. We have two, two items under general for tonight. First, we have item A, the Spirit of America recognitions. I'd like to thank Councillor Johnston for bringing one of these forward, and please let me read these into the record. The 2020 Spirit of America Award winner for Alejandra Herrera. Whereas Alejandra is a story of success and love for her adopted community. And whereas Alejandra and her husband Carlos have invested in their community by opening Cairo Cafe in Saco, a second location in Portland, and are soon opening a fine dining restaurant in Saco. And whereas Alejandra consistently donates to fundraisers and helps community events. And whereas during the COVID-19 pandemic, Alejandra volunteered her time to help local seniors, help feed local seniors. And whereas Alejandra is always willing to help and always greets her customers as if they were old friends. Now therefore, I, William Doyle, Mayor of Saco, on behalf of the city council hereby resolve with sincere gratitude and appreciation that Alejandra Herrera is recognized for her commitment to her community with the 2020 Saco Spirit of America Foundation Award, signed this third day of August 2020 by the mayor and city council in the city of Saco, Maine. Second recipient of the 2020 Spirit of America Award winner, we have Nick Scontress. Whereas throughout his life, Nick is led by example, not letting his disabilities dampen his enthusiasm and dedication to his beloved city. And whereas since childhood, Nick has volunteered for his church community, serving as an altar boy and volunteering at the annual Greek festival. And whereas, beginning in 1985, Nick has participated in me in Special Olympics Winter and Summer Games, both as an athlete, volunteer, and fundraiser. And whereas, since the eighth grade, Nick has been involved in Saco football team, starting as a manager of the Saco Middle School team and later at Thornton Academy. Nick's personality and sense of humor won the admiration of the players and the coaches, and with his help, the team won the Class A Football State Championship five times. And whereas, in 1989, Nick became a member of the Thornton Academy's Winter Indoor Track Team. Although he never finished better than last, his intensity in finishing each race earned him the Jim Daly Trophy for Most Outstanding Performer of All Regular Season Meets. Nick donated the trophy to his school so that others may be inspired to try their best, whatever their adversity. And whereas, in 1994, Saco's Hanaford Supermarket hired Nick as a Customer Associate bagging groceries. Many customers submitted commitment comment cards praising Nick for his positive attitude and sense of humor, earning him Associate of the Month three times. Now therefore, I, William Doyle, Mayor of Saco, on behalf of the Saco, on behalf of the city council hereby resolve with sincere gratitude and appreciation that Nick Scontress is recognized for his commitment to his community with the 2020 Saco Spirit of America Foundation Award, signed this third day of August 2020 by the mayor and city council in the city of Saco, Maine. I would like to thank both Alejandra Herrera and Nick Scontress for everything they do for our community. Up next, we have item B. Several meetings ago, we recognized some of the volunteers outside the city, but we really need to also recognize staff members that really came forward to make the Saco Parks and Rec Food Program a success. So with that, Saco Parks and Recreation Department quickly created a program to address food insecurity issues that began to arise in our community as the pandemic took hold. The program distributed more than 3,000 meals over 13 weeks to 460 separate Saco residents. Many Parks and Rec full-time staff were involved with the program week after week, adapting to our changing world and giving critical assistance, even though these tasks are not part of their normal responsibilities. Some of those staff members are Amelia Meyer, Sarah Musgrave, Alyssa Clark, Ryan Summer, and Erica Dooley. Saco police officers also assisted in the meal program, including food distribution. Like to recognize Officer Amanda Condon and Officer Morgan Royal for their help in making this program a success. Without these employees, the Saco Parks and Rec Food Program could not have happened. So again, I thank all of these folks for their dedication, and they will get the same certificate that will go in their personnel file, and the same certificate that went out to those volunteers that helped the city. So again, a round of applause for Amelia Meyer, Sarah Musgrave, Alyssa Clark, Ryan Summer, Erica Dooley, Officer Amanda Condon, and Officer Morgan Royal. With that, we are up to item five, committee correspondence to council. Is there any committee correspondence to council at this time? Seeing no committee correspondence and no council are seeking recognition, moving on to item six, public comment. City Administrator Keanrath, have you received any public comment?
I have not this time, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much. If there's anybody who would like to speak to the council, please use the raise hand feature of the Zoom platform, and you'll be unmuted to speak to the council for a period of three minutes. Again, if there's anybody who would like to speak to the council during public comment, please use the raise hand feature of the Zoom platform so you can be unmuted to speak to the council for a period of three minutes. If there's anybody using a handheld device and wishes to speak, you can use the raise hand feature by pressing star nine. Seeing no hands raised, we will move on from public comment to item seven, approval of the minutes for June 8th, 2020, June 15th, 2020, and July 13th, 2020. Is there a motion to approve the minutes?
So moved.
Motion's been made by Councillor Minthorne. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councillor McPhail. Any discussion? Any omissions? Seeing none. Roll call vote. Councillor Archer?
Aye.
Councillor Purdy?
Yes.
Councillor Gunn?
Yes.
Councillor Copeland?
Yes.
Councillor Minthorne?
Yes.
Councillor McPhail?
Yes.
Councillor Johnston?
No.
Motion passes 6-1. Moving on to item eight, we have the consent agenda items. We have five consent agenda items. Item A is the certification of election results for the state primary and state special referendum election and special general election and budget validation referendum election from June 12, excuse me, from July 14th, 2020. We also have item B, reappointment to the Historic Preservation Commission for Rob Biggs, Alyssa Boutat, Diane Hewitt, Ernest Lowell, Steve Ryan, and Julia May. Under item C, we have confirmed the mayor's reappointment of Coastal Waters Commission, James Katz. Under item D, we have an application for a solid waste permit, Doian's Property Maintenance and Landscaping. And then item E, application for a solid waste permit for waste management. Is there a motion for the consent agenda items? Let me back up. Is there anyone that would like to remove anything and vote on anything separate before we bring it to the floor? Is there a motion to accept the consent agenda item?
So moved.
Councillor Copeland, is there a second? Councillor Archer? Any discussion? Seeing no discussion, a roll call vote. Councillor Archer?
Aye.
Councillor Purdy?
Yes.
Councillor Gunn?
Yes.
Councillor Copeland?
Yes.
Councillor Minthorne?
Yes.
Councillor McPhail?
Yes.
Councillor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion passes 7-0. Thank you, everyone. Moving on to action items, item, agenda item nine, we have item A, public hearing, Chapter 81 Review to Marguerite Road, map 10, lot 17. Councillor Purdy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Earlier this year, the city council initiated its review of land donation to Habitat for Humanity. Since then, the Leadbergs, abutting property owners at 343 Flag Pond Road, have approached the city, asking to purchase some of the city's land that abuts their property. Staff reached out to Habitat representatives to ask that Habitat share a copy of the survey they were undertaking on the site. Staff received a copy of the survey, which shows several structures owned by the Leadbergs encroaching onto city's property. At this time and after reviewing several options, a positive solution seems to be to sell some of the city's land to the Leadbergs, retain at least 30,000 square feet of land for the city, and donate the remaining land to Habitat for Humanity. I move to open the public hearing regarding the following order in substantially the same form as presented. Be it ordered that the city administrator is hereby authorized to execute sale of approximately 10,000 square feet of land, and to execute all necessary documents to donate specified portion of land to Marguerite Road to the Habitat for Humanity.
Motion's been made by Councillor Purdy. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councillor Minthorne. Any discussion on opening the public hearing? Seeing none, roll call vote. Councillor Archer?
Aye.
Councillor Purdy?
Yes.
Councillor Gunn?
Yes.
Councillor Copeland?
Yes.
Councillor Minthorne?
Yes.
Councillor McPhail?
Yes.
Councillor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion passes 7-0 to open the public hearing at 6:44 PM. Public hearing is now open. If there's anyone who wishes to speak before the council on the Chapter 81 Review to Marguerite Road, please use the raise hand feature of the Zoom platform, and you'll be unmuted to speak to the council. Again, for those dialing in with a phone, star nine is the raise hand feature. Okay, we have Mel Leadberg. Up first. Andrew, can you unmute Mel? It doesn't give me the option to do that.
Can you hear me now?
Is this Mel Leadberg?
Yes.
Mel, if you could just state your name and then also your address for the record, and then you have three minutes.
Okay. Yeah, this is Mel Leadberg. My address is 343 Flag Pond Road in Saco, Maine. And so I'm the abutting owner next to the property that you've given to Habitat for Humanity. I think you can see from the letter that me and my wife were quite surprised to see that the line came, you know, putting our driveway and such on the other side of what is going to, what you'd be giving to Habitat. We noticed that on the satellite image that was given us to by one of our neighbors behind us. Well, first of all, too, I would like to thank Brian Keanrath and Emily Cole Prescott, Tim Murphy, I believe, is the city attorney, and and also Mayor Bill Doyle, who I'd like to talk to, for helping to bring this to a a amicable solution for all parties involved. We worked on this extensively, and we came to an agreement, but of course, it needs to be go through this Section 81 process, which is what we are doing. So I mean, I'm certainly available to answer any questions that you might have as far as what's going on. And I mean, earlier, I would have invited you guys out to maybe take a look and to see everything that, if you look at the property, it looks, it looks like everything belongs there. So if I can give you maybe a little bit of background, it was built back in 1976. The property was owned by the Boothbees. He did a development back in 1942, and that's why you guys are seeing all them little lots. Well, he passed away, and apparently got left to his wife Margaret, and she passed away sometime, I'm believing, before 71. So as far as I can see, there's been no one, that lot has been vacant for almost 50 years. So the builder, if you look, so I own two lots, 49 and 50, and if you look at my deed, there are no meets and bounds, any lengths. It just says 49 and 50. So I never seen a map until the survey from Habitat showed me one. He was even surprised himself where the line was, and he said that he went back a couple of times, again, to research the deeds. So if you look at, I think it's, I think I own 49 and 50. I think 50, I don't have the map in front of me, but I think 50 is the one furthest away from me. Well, there's nothing on that lot, but that's a lot going the other way. My house actually hugs the line towards the woods of 49. So when I step out of my door, yeah, I step off my steps, I take two steps, and that's where the city line is, which I never knew. And then from after that, there's my driveway. On the other side of that is a little bit of lawn, and then there's my shed. And there were some questions about the shed and about paying for stuff and taxes. And well, the city's been taxing me on that shed. It's on my tax form for forever, as far as I know. So I've been getting taxed. I don't know if people before me have been getting taxed. The shed's an old shed. I don't know if Dick Lamont took any pitches. I didn't meet him when he came up. The door itself has a skeleton key for an opening on the bottom. So stuff is old. So even in talking to the city attorney, I don't know if the council, men and women, have talked to him yet, but he even said that this was probably the best deal for us to come up with. And this is one that was kind of presented to me from Habitat. And, you know, I just said that I wanted to keep everything, at least that I had, and always believed to be mine. And he said, otherwise, it's a mess. It's, the driveway is not on my property. So he said, well, you got a huge problem there because the house is like worthless if you have no driveway. On the other end, Ed, he says he sees like a whole bunch of title issues potentially for the city that could take place because of all this going on. And the way he explained it is a lot of this goes away by just me signing and agreeing to this law, where this line is. And he was kind of trying to convince me that it was a good thing to do. And this Title 89 was supposed to be sort of just a formality. I mean, I think, you know, everybody was on board, the attorney, Brian, the city planner, and from what I know, Habitat was also. They didn't want to have to move my stuff or have any of that expense. So I guess, I mean, that's where we are now. So I just, I'm welcome to answer any questions that you may have. And I know one was, you know, of course, you go out and look for your pins, and I did, and I talked to her last week, my neighbor on the other side, and she still maintains that she thinks she owns the middle of the woods. Her father, she said, bought that property from the original Boothby. That's the Boothby Farm down on the corner from me, on the other side of the Habitat for Humanity. That's the original Boothby Farm. He did two developments, and that's where you see them little lots. There was 59 lots here, and they're little ones, like they're only 50 feet of frontage. There's one across the street, which is Boothby Campsites, which may even, I haven't looked at that map, but they may even be smaller sites. And that's another thing. My neighbor across the street is talking to him about that, and he said, well, he found out he had a strip of land. He did some title work. He has a strip of land in front of his house, and he approached the city council, I don't know if it was a few years ago, and even if he had to buy it or whatever, because it was right directly in front of his house, and he had mowed the lawn on it. The city gave it to him, he said. He said, you know, I don't understand why they're not, they're giving it away to Habitat? Why don't they give that section to you? It's just, I paid taxes on the shed all this time, so I don't understand that. I pay taxes on the, the shed is the furthest point away from, is the furthest point out of the land that I'm requesting. So if the city charged me taxes, I assume they were charging me taxes on the driveway. So and they're charging taxes on the sheds, so it's by right, they were charging me taxes for land underneath it. I just don't understand why this wouldn't be, I guess, a good solution for all involved, especially when Habitat is on board. This was their proposal that they gave to me.
Thank you, Mel.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time, and thank you for your comments. Up next, we have Amy Nucci. Amy, you've been allowed to speak. Please introduce yourself and your address for the record. And can you have three minutes for the council?
Okay, can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Okay. My name is Amy Nucci. I live at 11 Paul Avenue in Saco, and I'm also the Executive Director of Habitat for Humanity, York County. And I just want to also express that, as I did in my letter, Habitat's supportive of this solution. I'm happy to answer any questions that you have. I did hear several come up at the last meeting where this was discussed. That's, I don't have too much more to say, other than, as I wrote in my letter, we'd be, you know, really appreciative if we weren't given any other restrictions on the property in terms of installing a sprinkler system. We're happy, we're more than happy to look into it and apply for grants, but we're a little wary of it becoming a requirement for us to build or to receive the property, just because that would, you know, significantly increase our cost. But we would be happy to commit to looking into it and applying for grants otherwise. So that's all. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Amy, for your comments and for bringing this project forward on behalf of Habitat for Humanity to Saco. Up next, we have BCCM, BCCM. I'm going to allow, you're now allowed to speak. Again, just please state your name and address for the record, and you have three minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is Brad Moran. I'm an attorney in Sanford. I started working with Mel late last week. I sent a letter in support of his application to you. He covered pretty much everything. I just wanted to just offer just a few words in support of what he's asking the council to do here. This situation happens a lot more often than people think. There's not often surveys when people are purchasing property, especially back in that area, era. Nowadays, we do more often, we'll do like mortgage loan inspection plans or little plot plans. So Mel had no idea about this encroachment, and it probably has been out there for quite a while. We just barely scratched the surface of this thing, but it looks like the house is out there since 76. He also informed me that there was, there's a slab of a building that was even older, was out there. I think I pretty much just covered everything in my letter. The only thing I guess I would, I would add is, one, it's a pretty good solution in that, in addition to just moving all these projects forward, you're helping out, you know, one of your neighbors, one of your citizens who's going through a really stressful situation here, faced with having a marketability issue on his property. I deal with a lot of stressful situations in this job, and property ones seem to be one of the most stressful ones for people, especially when it's your home. And so he's really hopeful that you can help him out, help him kind of put this behind him, and also it'll net the city some money. He's agreed to pick up costs here. So it just seems like a win-win for everyone. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Moran, for your comments and your letter that's in the attached pack for the city council. If there's anybody else from the public comment or Chapter 81 Review to Marguerite Road, please use the raise hand feature of the Zoom platform, and you'll be unmuted to speak to the council. Seeing no further hands raised, Councillor Purdy?
I move to close the public hearing and schedule the second and final reading on August 17th, 2020 regarding the following order in substantially the same form as presented. Be it ordered that the city administrator is hereby authorized to execute sale of approximately 10,000 square feet of land, and to execute all necessary documents to donate specified portion of land to Marguerite Road to the Habitat for Humanity.
Second. Motion's been made by Councillor Purdy, second by Councillor Minthorne to close the public hearing. Any objection? Councillor Copeland, then Councillor Archer. Councillor Copeland?
I have no objection to closing the public hearing, but I would like to make a comment when it's time.
Sure.
Is now the time?
Yeah.
I'm just curious if the property owner has title insurance?
City Administrator Keanrath, was that uncovered during the process?
I don't know the answer to that. Obviously, Mr. Leadberg's attorney or Mr. Leadberg would know that, or maybe our attorney, Tim Murphy, who's also, I believe, on standby if we need him. So I don't, one of those three may have the answer to that.
I'd love to hear from them if they do.
Councillor Archer?
Yes, this is more about the motion. I'm for pushing it forward to the next, and I'm even for trying to make it as simple as possible. It's just a language. I'd like to see that somewhere in the motion, it talks about fair market value, as that is different than assessed. Right now, we have it opened, and I trust our city administrator, but this motion could suggest that it could be as low as a dollar, and I just want to make sure we're protecting our citizens by saying fair market value, recognizing that is different than assessed. Other than that, that's all I have.
City Administrator Keanrath, do you have any answer for Councillor Archer?
Okay, we do have, it would be the intent of the city to sell it to the Leadbergs at the assessed value, which is about $5,847. Market value may be different from that. We have to have an outside, I think, appraiser to then do another evaluation.
Okay. With that additional information, I would just like, again, council can agree or disagree. I'd like to just see then assessed value written into the motion. That way, we know exactly what we're selling it for.
Well, didn't they say with fees as well?
Councillor Copeland? Counselor Copeland, please. Counselor Archer, did you want to make that as an amendment? Or do you want to just, uh, see it in the, in, in a, in the new motion, uh, in the second and final reading?
I don't see the need to do the amendment now, as it can be changed by staff, uh, until next week. I just hope to see it in, as written, or I will be making amendment.
Thank you, Counselor Archer. Councilor Copeland.
Well, I heard their attorney saying that, um, and I think he said it, I'm not, I'm not sure who said it, but one of the, either the attorney or the landowner, um, said that they would pay for costs as well, and I think that that's reasonable, given that, you know, he's had a free ride. So I think that in addition to the assessed value or whatever value we're going to put on it, add whatever costs.
I second that.
Any further discussion before the vote? Seeing no hands raised and no counselors, uh, Counselor Gunn.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I have to excuse me, my, uh, feet here is a little spotty and I missed the substance of, uh, the last bit of Counselor Archer's and Counselor Copeland's comments. Um, I assume it's a, um, could you please just repeat very quickly what was actually just discussed between them?
Counselor Archer, Counselor Copeland, do you want to re, uh, explain what you were?
Uh, you can summarize it or I, I can, no, no problems.
Would you like me to summarize it or?
Please.
Just a reader's digest, so I, I'm with it.
Sure, so we just had that the purchase would be at the city assessed value of the property, which right now is about fifteen hundred dollars, we would say assessed value. Also, Counselor Copeland also added to, um, put in any fees or other, um, due diligence items that will be on the cost of the, of the buyer, the Leeburgs. Is that, is that fair?
Uh, follow-up question, Brian, with, to your comments, does that mean we would have to reassess the property or does the assessed value in the paperwork stand as is?
Our, our assessing department has already come up with that, that assessed value.
So that's what the assessment we would go with?
If we were to go to something like market value, that would require, I think, an outside appraiser for that value, because that may be different, obviously, from our, our own assessed value.
Well, my question is then, is even with, uh, Counselor Archer's added language, though, we're still going with the assessed value?
Assessed value, correct. I think that was the consensus we just heard.
All right, thank you.
Counselor Copeland.
I would like to, uh, formally request that they find out and let us know if there's title insurance on this property.
We can get an answer for that, for the next, uh, for the next, for the second and final reading.
Very good, thank you.
Counselor Mintorn.
Thank you, Mayor. Let's just make sure that, uh, the proper easements are in place whenever we draw the new property line, so we don't have any more encroachment.
Thank you, Counselor Mintorn. Any further discussion before the vote? Any further? Seeing no hands raised and no counselors seeking recognition. Uh, roll call vote, Counselor Archer.
Aye.
Counselor Purdy.
Yes.
Counselor Gunn.
Yes.
Counselor Copeland.
Yes.
Counselor Mintorn.
Yes.
Counselor McPhail.
Yes.
And Counselor Johnston.
Yes.
Motion to close the public hearing and move, uh, forward to second and final readers, reading passes seven zero at, uh, seven oh five P M. Moving on to item B, Workers' Compensation Safety Incentive Program. Counselor Archer.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. MMA Main Municipal Association has developed a Work Comp Safety Incentive Program to help reduce the incidence and impact of workplace injuries by implementing Workers' Comp Claims Best Practices. This program replaces the current leader program. MMA has asked that participating municipalities gain approval from their respected boards or councils. Uh, whereas the city of Saco is a member of the Main Municipal Association Works Comp Fund, uh, whereas the main, uh, MMA provides risk management services and workers' compensation coverage. Whereas Main, uh, MMA developed the Workers' Comp Safety Incentive Program to help reduce the incidence and impact of workplace injuries by implementing Workers' Comp Claims Practices. And whereas MMA will provide necessary written program information and offer assistance to participants. And whereas Workers' Comp funders that participate in the program and complete the required activities will have the opportunity to earn a credit to their annual contribution. And whereas the city of Saco is committed to providing a safe environment for employees, citizens, and visiting public. And whereas the program will help enhance such an environment and promoting a self-sustaining culture of safety and with participating members. Now therefore, be it resolved by the city of Saco to elect, to participate in the MMA Workers' Comp Safety Incentive Program. I move to approve the resolution.
Second. Motion's been made by Counselor Archer, second by Counselor Mintorn. Any discussion?
It saves money.
Uh, seeing no hands raised and no counselor seeking recognition, roll call vote, Counselor Archer.
Aye.
Counselor Purdy.
Yes.
Counselor Gunn.
Yes.
Counselor Copeland.
Yes.
Counselor Mintorn.
Yes.
Counselor McPhail.
Yes.
Counselor Johnston.
Yes.
Motion passes seven zero. Thank you. Moving on to item C, Acceptance of Zoning Ordinance Revision Project Completion Timeline from our previous meeting. Counselor Johnston.
On February twentieth, twenty eighteen, the city council voted to adopt the two thousand and eighteen updated Saco's Comprehensive Plan, which was a result of two years of review and discussion by an ad hoc committee and staff. On October fifteenth, twenty eighteen, the city council established the zoning ordinance revision steering committee to work with selected consultants, TZM Planning and EF Design and Planning LLC, which were chosen as a result of competitive RFP process. This work included a survey initiative with over a thousand respondents and a well-attended charade, as well as multiple meetings about the direction of the, for the zoning site plan and subdivision ordinances. Consultants in ZOR Committee, I, and ZOR Steering Committee produced drafts one, two, and three of the ordinances, which were under review through October twenty nineteen. In October twenty nineteen, the Planning Board and Historic Preservation Commission hosted meetings and public hearings to review and forward reports on the proposed draft, three ordinances to city council. On November fourth, twenty nineteen, the city council held its public hearing, referred the zoning site plan and subdivision ordinances and zoning map to the planning board for further review. At this meeting, the city council also accepted the Planning Board and Historic Preservation Reports. On the proposed historic preservation section, the draft three ordinances and approved the second and final reading of the historic preservation ordinance on November eighteenth, twenty nineteen. Since December twenty nineteen, the project has been staff-led and the ZOR Steering Committee and Planning Board have met in workshops to review remaining items of the draft ordinances. The time, energy, and effort that the committee and board members have dedicated, extra workshop time should be commended. The Planning Board and ZOR Steering Committee have reviewed this proposed completion timeline at the, uh, June thirtieth and July fourteenth workshops and have provided consensus to move forward with the anticipated schedule. I move to support this proposed completion timeline, noting that it may be subject to revision as the project moves toward completion.
Second. Motion's been made by Counselor Johnston, second by Counselor Mintorn. The, as everyone can see, the, uh, timeline is on page forty-five of the packet. Uh, are there any discussion or objections to, before we take a vote? Seeing no hands raised and no counselors seeking recognition, a roll call vote, Counselor Archer.
Aye.
Counselor Purdy.
Yes.
Counselor Gunn.
Yes.
Counselor Copeland.
Yes.
Counselor Mintorn.
Yes.
Counselor McPhail.
Yes.
And Counselor Johnston.
Yes.
Motion passes seven zero. Thank you. Uh, we are now at, uh, item ten, new business. We have four items on the agenda. Under new business, we have, uh, first, EPA Alternatives Analysis Presentation. We have City Administrator Canrath, who from city staff will be presenting.
Yes, Director Howard Carter should be available for this, this.
Thank you. Thank you. Andrew, can you promote, uh, Howard Carter, please? Thank you. Director Carter, welcome and thank you for joining us this evening.
Oh, my pleasure, my pleasure. So basically, um, EPA approached us on this about doing a, facilitating a, uh, a working group. Basically, it is, and they will partner with us to convene and facilitate a community stakeholder group. Together with the, with the Water Resource Recovery Department, the community stakeholders will work to identify a set of community goals to guide future investment and priorities for the WRRD operations. And they've agreed to facilitate and, uh, support the framework for this. I think, they, they approached us on this a while ago, and I think it's a good exercise. Um, most of you folks are all aware of the sea level rise we're dealing with. I think one thing we want to take a long-term look at this. If we're going to vote to bond and do some of that type of work, I think we should really look at a long-term goal for the facility. This look out twenty, thirty years, you know. Uh, we get to the point that our infrastructure is over fifty years old, which is true. And we're now, we're starting to experience quite a bit of growth. So I think we want to have that plan going forward, so we all know what we're looking at. I think a community buy-in would be a big part of that. And Emily Roy in the Communication Department has, has certainly agreed to join in with us to help get the word out and just put the folks to thinking. So that's basically what that is. That would, if you, if you guys approve that, that would probably have a kickoff meeting in September and that would probably run to the end of the year, probably around December timeframe and hopefully report back to the council with what we're finding. And I don't know if Emily wants to add anything to that or not.
Sure, um, so this, as Howard had said, this committee will, um, will convene in September, most likely. These will be virtual meetings due to, um, you know, the pandemic. Um, so the committee will consist of twelve to fifteen members. And then there will be three virtual meetings, a tour of the facility, probably a virtual tour or smaller groups. Um, and then that group will help articulate a set of community goals that align with the water utility. So we're really thankful that the EPA has chosen Saco. Howard and his team have done a, a lot of work. They've worked with the EPA on several projects. Um, and so it's just nice that they thought of Saco for this one as well. And, uh, we're excited to partner with our community members to ensure their voices are heard and their feedback is included in this process. So if any community members are interested in participating, we have a board and committee application page on our website. So if you go to our website, there's a boards and committee page, you can get that application. You can always email Howard, the mayor, or, or me as well, and we're happy to connect them with all the information.
Thank you, Emily. Thank you, Howard. Again, Howard, thank you to you and, and your staff. Because certainly that's the catalyst for the EPA wanting to work with us and partner with us and make us a, a premier city as they move forward in these kind of uh, discussions and these kind of endeavors. So again, thank you to you and your staff, uh, for your hard work.
Thank you very much.
Any questions from the council, uh, under, uh, for the presentation piece? Uh, and then you'll see item B as the, uh, formation of a, uh, ad hoc committee. Uh, but under the presentation piece, are there any questions for Howard or Emily? Uh, seeing no questions, no counselors seeking recognition or raising your hand. Howard, as always, you've done a fantastic job in a short amount of time in presenting, uh, what you had to the council, so thank you.
You're welcome.
With that, we are on to item B, Counselor McPhail.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The purpose of this ad hoc committee is to bring together members of the community, city councilors and staff to identify a set of community goals to guide future investment and priorities for the Water Resource Recovery Department. The WRRD and Communications Department are partnering with the U.S. Environmental Protection Agency to convene this community stakeholder group and facilitate and support meaningful conversations between the anchor institution and community members. The committee appointed by the mayor will consist of twelve to fifteen members. Be it ordered that the city council authorize the creation of an ad hoc WRRD Coastal Resiliency Committee and allow the mayor to confirm appointments to the committee as necessary. I move to approve the order.
Motion's been made by Counselor McPhail. Any, any second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Gunn. Uh, any discussion? Counselor Johnston.
I'm sure you know where I'm going with this. Uh, similar to last week or last time we met. In the motion, we have the mayor confirming and appointing. So I, just as a friendly amendment, I'd like that change, that the mayor appoint and council confirm appointment. If that's all right with those that have made the motion.
Amendment by Counselor Johnston, uh, to follow the language that's, uh, built into the charter that the mayor will, uh, appoint and council confirm, uh, appointments to committees. Is there a second to the amendment?
Second.
Second by Counselor Mintorn. Any discussion on the amendment? Seeing no discussion on the amendment, roll call vote, Counselor Archer.
Aye.
Counselor Purdy.
Yes.
Counselor Gunn.
Yes.
Counselor Copeland.
Yes.
Counselor Mintorn.
Yes.
Counselor McPhail.
Yes.
And Counselor Johnston.
Yes.
Motion passes seven zero. Back to the main motion for, to authorize the creation of a, uh, WRRD Coastal Resiliency Ad hoc Committee as amended. Any discussion? Seeing no counselor seeking recognition and no hands raised, roll call vote, Counselor Archer.
Aye.
Counselor Purdy.
Yes.
Counselor Gunn.
Yes.
Counselor Copeland.
Yes.
Counselor Mintorn.
Yes.
Counselor McPhail.
Yes.
And Counselor Johnston.
Yes.
Motion passes seven zero. Thank you very much. Uh, at this point, we are to item C, Discussion on Formation of an Arts Commission. We have Counselor McPhail.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The purpose of this commission is to bring together members of the community, city councilors and staff to improve the aesthetic quality of the city's public spaces. The commission will encourage and support art in our community while strengthening economic development and improving, improving quality of life. The commission will act as an advisory body to the city council and city staff to provide expertise on visual arts to enrich the cultural life in Saco. The committee appointed by the mayor will consist of nine members. Be it ordered that the city council authorize the creation of Arts Commission and allow the mayor to confirm appointments to the commission as necessary. I move to approve the order.
Second.
Motion's been made by Counselor McPhail, second by Counselor Johnston. Counselor Johnston, I imagine you're going to make an amendment that's similar to the last three committees and commissions that have been brought forward. Uh, and that amendment is to remove the mayor's confirmation ability, uh, and replace it with appointment ability and then confer, confirmation ability through the council. Am I correct?
Thank you.
Is there a second?
Second.
I think Counselor Archer had that second. Or was it Counselor, yeah, Counselor Archer, thank you. Uh, uh, any questions on the amendment? Seeing no hands raised and no counselor seeking rec, recognition, roll call vote on the amendment, Counselor Archer.
Aye.
Counselor Purdy.
Yes.
Counselor Gunn.
Yes.
Counselor Copeland.
Yes.
Counselor Mintorn.
Yes.
Counselor McPhail.
Yes.
Counselor Johnston.
Yes.
A motion passes seven zero to pass the amendment. Back to the main motion, the authorization. Uh, authorize the creation of an arts commission as amended. Any discussion? Counselor Johnston.
Thank you. I just wanted to say that I'm, I'm happy to see this come to fruition. Um, it's something that I've been kind of after for at least the last four years and it will be exciting to, you know, get it going. So, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Johnston. Hopefully, some of these committees will be able to meet and foster good work and rapport even in the times of a pandemic and with stuff we can't normally do, such as some of these outdoor activities like music in the parking lot and some of these other car show and the art show downtown. Hopefully, we will get past that and all be able to get together and do some of these activities in the future. So with that, any further discussion? On the motion to authorize the creation of an arts commission as amended, a roll call vote. Counselor Archer?
Aye.
Counselor Purdy?
Yes.
Counselor Gunn?
Yes.
Counselor Copeland?
Yes.
Counselor Menthorn?
Yes.
Counselor McPhail?
Yes.
And Counselor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion passes seven zero. Thank you very much. We are at item D. We have a TIF report. City Administrator Kane Rath, who will be providing the TIF report. Will that be Economic Planning Development Director? Any? Thank you very much.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you.
Director Clavett, thank you very much. Welcome and thanks for joining us.
Great. Before I get started with the report, I want to start by thanking City Administrator Brian Kane Rath, you, Mayor Doyle, and members of the Saco City Council for giving me the opportunity to present to you our first annual TIF financial year-end report for FY '20. We plan on doing this biannually, so in six months' time, we'll be back with a report out of where we are at. And I also want to thank you all for the support for the TIF districts. As you know, we've done a lot of work here in the last couple of years and for the credit enhancement agreements over the years. The city of Saco, and this is for the benefit of the new counselors, was the first community in the state of Maine to actually utilize the program when it was initiated by the state Maine Department of Economic Community Development. So I also want a huge shout out and thank you to the original initial council that actually had the foresight to take advantage of these types of programs. To that end, when I began here in 2018, just about two years, a little over two years ago now, the TIF districts and their development programs, other than the downtown district, were initially set up to fund basically your public infrastructure like roads, sewer infrastructure, maybe a public works building, fire station, development of business parks and a few other basic projects. But strategically, after analyzing these TIF districts, I spearheaded pretty much for the initial council, you know, the long haul that we had to amend seven of the TIF districts to basically accommodate a more comprehensive development program to be able to fund many, many more projects, infrastructure and initiatives. More importantly, the analysis also showed that several of these would have expired within three to five years. So we use these amendments to capitalize on the extension of these programs and TIF districts so they could maximize for another 10 to 15 years. To date, I'm currently managing nine TIF districts with an annual budget funding of about $2.9 million that funds many projects initiatives from road construction to the new public works building and the new business park lots, salaries and studies for economic development, signs for the upcoming weight finding project in Saco, Bedford-Saco Old Orchard Beach Transit, downtown streetscape and infrastructure improvements, transportation center improvements, Saco Main Street, Bedford-Saco Chamber, Southern Maine Finance Agency, sewer and general road obligation bond payments, sidewalks, trails connectivity and more, all for the benefits of Saco's businesses, for the people who work and live here and for visitors as well. Did you know that for every new tax dollar of revenue generated for the city of Saco valuation growth, the city loses local funding of about 49 cents on a dollar? Easy math tells you that's 50%. So when Saco increases in its property valuation, whether it's for business or residential growth, there's a proportionate decrease in revenue sharing, school funding given back to the schools, and there's also a corresponding increase in county taxes. So for properties within the TIF districts, it behooves us to have this TIF district capability so that we shelter that new valuation. So if you use simple math, that represents Saco's being able to keep that additional 50% or 49 cents, 49%, and be able to spend it locally, control it locally, to fund projects that are identified in the development program. In our case, many of the public infrastructure projects, whether they're bond payments, economic development salaries, et cetera, that used to be funded out of the general fund are now shifted over into the TIF funds, TIF districts. So when you use simple more math, more simple math, it would take almost about $5.8 million of general fund revenue generated to fund $2.9 million of projects. So behooves us to continue on the TIF district path. So before we review the Taxicam and Finance District's report for the FY 2020 year-end, I'd like to recognize a little bit of what the economic development efforts and our team consisting of Jessa Burna, Economic Development Specialist, Emily Cole Prescott, our planner, and Isabel Exley, our Planning and Economic Development Associate, and myself. From the initial consult with the Director of Planning and Economic Development to further conversations with Economic Development and Planning Team, we're proud to inform you of some pretty darn impressive statistics and data for Saco. New businesses and companies in the last 12 to 14 months include Hancock Lumber, Aduwe Pile, Convenient MD, Ashley the Ren Designs, Nickel Precision Manufacturing, Ready Seafood and Quince. Together, these businesses actually created $60 million worth of investment in Saco. New property valuation of almost $21 million, which means a new tax revenue of about $413,000 represents $170,000 plus of new building space, over 400 new employees here in the confines of Saco. Some of our building expansions include Main Molecular, Lunder Manufacturing, Patriot Subaru and Bedford-Saco Dental. Together, these businesses chose to stay here in Saco and expand here rather than relocate, and they created over 70,000 square feet of new building space, and the numbers of new employees are yet to be determined. So in addition to this data, our economic development team fielded well over 100 inquiries in the past year, both from current businesses looking to expand and make business modifications and from area statewide and regional out-of-state businesses looking to locate here. As part of our business retention and expansion program, we're also beginning a business outreach and visitation program. We sent a letter out to almost 1,000 businesses. But when COVID-19 hit, that basically came to a halt. So we will anticipate beginning the in-person visitation in September. So at this time, unless there are questions on that aspect, I'd like to start with the year-end report. But if there are any questions, Mayor Doyle, I'd be happy to talk about some of the businesses that have come in, or I can move right on into the report.
Thank you, Director Clavett. At this time, are there any questions for Denise from council? Seeing no questions at this time. Director Clavett, please continue.
All right. If I may, I will share my screen, and if I could, you could let me know if that works for you folks. I'll pull up the report. Let me just see here. Is this up and running for you folks?
Your screen is being shared.
All right. What we did this year, the response of, to respond to the council's request for TIF financials and our year-end status and where the projects were at, what I did is create this document that actually shows the TIF districts by district, shows the development program and the credit enhancement agreements that currently exist, what was budgeted in FY '20, where the status is, what we spent on the projects. And basically, what we're looking at for the carried-forward budget balance. So if we start with the fire station land acquisition, $200,000 was budgeted. Again, real quickly, the fire station clearly has not, the land has not been purchased, but it will remain earmarked and has carried over into the upcoming years should that still happen. There's also $200,000 toward the 260 that has been earmarked for the communications tower. Again, that is earmarked and will be spent when we get to that point. $30,000 was considered in legal fees. At this point, we've only spent $4,000. There's a carryover balance of about $25,900. Saco Gateway Project will begin later this fall in sorry, that's a mistake here, fall 2021, fall 2020, and that will begin shortly. Workforce development programs are scheduled to begin in January 2021. Keep in mind that these programs are specific to businesses, and we have yet to sit down with the businesses to find out exactly what they are looking for and what they need. Industrial Park sidewalks, due to the current public works workload, we have postponed this to FY '21. We continue to pay the general obligation bond payment for road bonds of 110. We have earmarked $50,000 toward MAPS GIS overlays once the zoning ordinance revision has been completed, and we paid last year for a portion of the, a prorated portion of the licenses for vision. So we have a carryover balance of $244,642. Page two involves TIF District number five, which is 77 Industrial Park Road. Business retention and expansion, we're continuing to work on that project. To date, we have bought proprietary software to be able to retain the information from the businesses. We have to date spent $14,000 out of the business attraction market analysis project. And then the trade shows and travel for business attraction clearly did not begin primarily because we were slated to go to some this spring, but those were canceled due to COVID. So we have a carryover balance there of $83,139. The next one is TIF District number seven, Spring Hill Road. Development lots, land acquisition that was, we put it there, but that was earmarked for FY '19, and no money was put in FY '20, so that has a zero balance. The site engineering development lots, the 1.2 million combined, those were the prorated site engineering and road construction costs for the new business park adjacent to the Public Works new facility. It also paid for the majority of the Public Works access road. 165 for the Bedford-Saco Old Orchard Beach Transit District. And then paying a prorated portion of the sewer bond payment of 175, 625. And then legal fees we hadn't budgeted, but there were some related to the Spring Hill Road, the creation of the CEAs. And so we spent $4,100. So the carryover balance at this point is none. We have a negative carryover. Credit enhancement agreements to that point were not planned for. I mean, they weren't budgeted, as you can see, but they were with the Aduwe Pile, and the credit enhancement agreement was to the cost of $26,002. All right. Page four involves TIF District eight, 34 Spring Hill Road. $30,000 was put in and earmarked for business attraction. Again, that's carried over. Credit enhancement agreements were budgeted for White Rabbit LLC. And that was to the tune of 17,1. The actual payment is $16,754. That has been paid out. So you're looking at a carryover balance of $30,000 for the expenses. Page five involves TIF District number nine, Park North. $160,000 was carried for the Flag Pond US Route One signalization. The traffic movement permit has been approved and is signed for, and that will begin in its, in the fall of 2020. 2020, 21 will be will be when it begins. That's another error I got to fix. I'm sorry. So there's 160,000 carried over, and keep in mind that that's a three-way match. 160 coming from Hancock Lumber, 160 from the TIF district, and 160,000 coming from the state of Maine. Zoning ordinance coding, when that is done, that will be done for the business portion, that will be done from the TIF district as well. Again, additional funding for MAPS is also funded out of here. And the legal fees, to date, we spent $3,000. So the carryover balance going into FY '21 is $2,206,868. The Park North development program has one credit enhancement agreement, and that's with the Park North Development. And at this point, this last year, it was 352,797 was paid out. We anticipate that once they have, Park North Development proves and shows what they've spent on principal and interest to date, that the developer can reach approximately $7 million over the course of the term. Next one is TIF 12, Chinburg. That district pays for the Bedford-Saco Chamber dues. There's no carryover balance on that one. Credit enhancement agreements are with Saco Mill number four, and last year's payments were in the, to the tune of $196,436. TIF District 14 is the Millbrook Omnibus District. There was no money budgeted there last year for any project. However, that said, we needed to spend some legal fees pertaining to that, and so that was in the tune of $1,299, so we're running a negative $1,299. One thing I'd like to add about the legal fees is all of these fees in general were actually charged to the city solicitor line in the general fund. So we were able to backtrack and actually reclassify these expenses, pull them out of the city administrators' city solicitor line, and actually paid for that out of the TIF districts. The credit enhancement agreements in this district involve number nine, MB LLC, which is also known as Nickel Precision Manufacturing, and then Millbrook as well, and Ponco Millwork. The total of those combined ended up being about $78,489. And then TIF District number 15, which is the downtown, which at this point is becoming the most robust TIF district. We had the CUTS AV grant commitment. The final payment would have been made this year, but they released by the developer because the the completion date was not projected to be in the next couple of years. So we were able to get the developer, I was able to negotiate a release of that final payment pending proof that that project would continue. Saco Main Street, $71,000 was paid out. Facade improvement grant program, we put in $60,000. That carried over to this year. We have one application right now in tow. So we're looking forward to looking at that application. Downtown grant program, $40,000 was allocated. Nothing has been spent out. And this will be administered through the Southern Maine Finance Agency. We were thankfully with the council able to provide COVID-19 loans, business emergency loans, basically SELF stands for the COVID Emergency Loan Fund that was administered by NSMFA. We've had an initial installment of $70,000, and the balance of the 130 will be distributed in FY '21. To date, we are actually, I think we have $12,500 to administer. And so we've pretty much utilized all of those. And the legal fees came in at $2,700, so we have a carryover balance projected of $34,949. The Ready Seafood, nothing was budgeted. The CEA is written as such. In the first year, the CEA amount was $15,488. And that's where we are at with that line. And then I ended up putting in the general dynamics, just for your record. All it was, was the CEA left, and that project has actually terminated. So ready for any questions if you are?
Thank you, Director Clavett. Are there any questions from council or Denise? Again, thank you, Denise, for the presentation. It's a lot of information all at once, so.
Probably too much, but at least it's one document that has everything you need. And I think we're going to update it also to have the information on the inflows as far as how much funding is being generated on an annual basis.
Any, any questions, comments? Counselor Johnston?
Thank you. Yeah, I mean, I haven't fully
Yeah, I mean, I haven't fully had the opportunity to digest it all, but I just wanted to thank Denise. You know, this is something that, as she knows, I've been after for six years. Since I got on council, I thought we needed to have better reporting, and I'm thankful for her efforts to make that happen. So I will take more of a look, and I'm sure I'll have questions. So, thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Johnston. It's been hanging over my head to make sure you folks got this report.
Any further questions or comments for Director Clovet? Seeing no counselors hand raised, no counselor seeking recognition. Director Clovet, thank you again for your presentation and for this.
Thank you very much. Have a great evening.
This working document. With that, council, it brings us to item 11, the administrative updates to the Administrator camera.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Starting with the Keep Maine Healthy Program, as you might have known, the city was recently awarded $116,735 in the first round of the Keep Maine Healthy Grant Program. Our proposal for the second round was submitted this last Friday, requesting an additional $87,700, and we should know possibly in the next week the results of that. I'd like to thank you, Development Specialist Jessa Burna, for all of her help and assistance with getting these applications. Signs, we have ordered signs for beaches to promote compliance with social distancing and mask wearing while on the walkways. We've also ordered signs on a number of dog issues. The first is, we'll say dogs are not allowed on playing fields. These signs will be placed at Saco Middle School, Young Softball, Burn School, Fostered Complex, Bruno Field, Richard Way, and Plymouth Settlement Fields. We have additionally ordered signs stating all dogs must be on leash or under voice command. This is reflecting what the language says in our ordinance. If there is a desire to revisit that, we can certainly revisit that, but that is per our current ordinance. So these signs will be placed at all public city parks. An update on the Down Eastern Transportation Center, the Amtrak Down Eastern is now operating four trains per day between Brunswick and Boston, and as of today, the Saco Transportation Center has reopened to the public from 9:00 AM to 5:00 PM daily. We will have reduced seating to ensure people can remain physically distant from each other, and also indoor restrooms will be closed for the time being. There are portable toilets available outside the building still. Bedford Saco, Old Orchard Beach Transit has also begun increasing its schedule, and you can find all those updates on their website, bsobtransit.org. Elections, nomination papers are now available for school board seats and awards two, four, and six, which will be on November 3rd. General election ballot candidates are required to obtain 35 signatures of registered voters within their respective wards. Nomination papers will be due back to the city clerk's office no later than Friday, September 4th. A big retirement to announce, you may have already seen on some social media and elsewhere, but Dick Lambert, our Director of Building and Codes, our Building and Codes Department, has given me formal notice that he intends to retire on September 11th of this year. Dick has been with the city since 1985, and will take with him obviously a huge volume of institutional memory and knowledge. He'll be sorely missed, of course, and we thank him for his many years of service in the city, but as we get closer to his retirement date, we will have more of a recognition in fall for Dick Lambert, so we're not quite done with him yet, but a big retirement to announce there. An update on the Saco Riverwalk, an estimated 100-foot portion of the Saco Riverwalk Trail located behind Mill number four at 120 Main Street will be closed intermittently for construction work starting on August 3rd and concluding on or about August 24th. Brookfield Renewable will be performing the work on the West Channel diversion wall to enhance fish passage associated with the Cataract Hydro Project. The construction project will last approximately four weeks. Through the duration of the project, the trail, which is located behind one of the mills, is expected to be open during the weekends and evenings during weekdays. The trail will be closed intermittently during crane and heavy equipment operation for public safety. Due to weather conditions and water flow levels, repair work is subject to change without prior notice. For any questions, anyone can email main.inquiries@brookfieldrenewable.com. Again, that was main.inquiries@brookfieldrenewable.com. Happy to take any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, City Administrator Kenrath. Two questions on your first item, or second item, rather, Keep Maine Healthy. Have we utilized the $116,000 that we've received thus far? Because I think the deadline to utilize that money is October 31st, and that's my first question.
Yes, we have to submit invoices, and I'll get a, I'll get a full update in accounting of where we are in that for the next report.
Thank you. The second question is, with the retirement, we have already, it's my understanding that we've already posted for that Director of Codes position on the website for folks to apply to.
Yes.
Thank you, City Administrator Kenrath. Counselor Archer?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I was the one that presented the language, I believe, by saying state law. Is it possible to still amend the dog signs and not say verbal control? As we know, that verbal control for animals typically is very hard to enforce, and dogs by themselves, and even I'm a dog owner myself, they can be, I don't know the best word to say, it's, it's just, for the dogs that are out there, again, it's more about the safety. So again, I'd just like to put under, take out stricken, the, under verbal control. And I'd also like to, I'll just announce it now, that I would like to start maybe looking at an ordinance change to omit that section from our ordinance. It would just be a single line item, not many changes to the ordinance, but just under verbal control and omit that, strike it through.
Thank you, Counselor Archer. I think we can, we can look at bringing something forward, look at bringing the dog ordinance policy forward, if the council would like that. I would like to make any recommended changes to that. If you have recommended changes ahead of time, please submit it to City Administrator Kenrath, and we'll look to amend that policy, bring it forward for council consideration at that time.
And my concern for putting it on the signs now is that if we do change the ordinance, we're gonna have to spend more money on 30 signs, so I just think it's more effective to not put it on the sign now, since we do have that ability to amend it because the order is just going through, rather than correct it in the future at a cost.
Yeah, I'll just say this now, if there is, as I alluded to, if there is a desire to maybe look at changing that ordinance, I think we, we could do that and hold on these signs where it says on leash or under voice command. We could still go forward with the other signs saying no dogs allowed on playing fields to be placed at all those sites that I mentioned, so go forward with those. Hold on the other ones per council, possible council action on an ordinance change. Does that sound reasonable?
Yes.
That if there is a change, we can, we can go forward with signs to reflect that, but we just, I mean, the current ordinance does also say voice command, so we would have to look at that.
And I think when I first was bringing this forward for the signs, I actually said per ordinance and state law, so you're literally doing what I had mentioned, but now I'm just thinking it should be corrected even further.
Thank you, Counselor Archer. Thank you, City Administrator Kenrath. Counselor Copeland.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. I have to disagree with the approach here. I don't think that we should be changing our ordinance. There was one horrifying, I'm sure, situation that happened recently, but I think the better approach, instead of, you know, our city is 20,000 residents, right? So we're gonna make this change for everybody, and there are people who have dogs who are responsive to commands. Mine is not one of them, I get that, but I don't think that we should be penalizing everything, everyone for this. I mean, and, you know, to say that it's vague if they are responsive, I mean, if you say, if you tell your dog to come or to stop and he doesn't, that's noncompliant, so I don't think there's any ambiguity there. But I, but I do think that the problem could be resolved by raising the fine. You know, $25, somebody's not gonna care. You make it $100 for the first time, you make it $250 for the next, $500 for the next, then people will stop and behaviors will change. So I don't think that we need to do an overall ordinance change that affects everyone in our community. There are people who do enjoy walking their well-behaved dogs on voice command, and I would be against changing that, but I would be in favor of raising the fines. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Copeland. My, my goal here is not to get into a discussion at this moment in time, we're at the administrative update portion. If you have questions for City Administrator Kenrath, we will certainly look at the city's dog ordinance policy in the future, and that will be the appropriate time to, you know, amend that perhaps with the voice control or with increasing fines or any other provision that the council deems is appropriate. Any further questions for the city administrators surrounding the administrative update? Seeing no hands raised and no counselor seeking recognition. Thank you, City Administrator Kenrath. We are now at item 12, council discussion and comment. Council, any discussion in common? Councilor Menthorn?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I wanted to point out that I received, and I'm sure all of you received, a letter of recommendation for one of our code enforcement internal staff from a local contractor. It ended up in my junk email folder, so you might want to check your junk folder if you did not see something from a contractor.
Thank you, Councilor Menthorn. Counselor Copeland.
I would like to thank the Traffic Safety Committee for the great work that they have done. They have worked with our neighbors down here in the beach area during this COVID time. It's been a very difficult time, and they really stepped up to it, and they put signs for no parking along the dangerous sections and the winding sections of Seaside, and they worked with the folks down on King Street and worked out some of their issues and just overall really listened, and the signs were up instantly. It was really wonderful, and I'm really proud of them. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Copeland. Any further? I also would like to thank the Traffic Safety Committee for the free street parking lot fix behind the post office with the handicap spaces in fixing those, or the process of approval in fixing those, to make those spaces more handicap-friendly. So thank you for the Traffic Safety Committee for that. Anything further? Seeing no hands raised and no counselor seeking recognition, we have no executive session tonight. With that, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Is there a second? Motion's been made by Councilor Menthorn, second by Councilor Purdy. Any discussion? Seeing no discussion, roll call, vote Counselor Archer.
Hi.
Yes.
Hi, Sadie.
Yes.
Counselor Purdy.
Yes.
Counselor Gunn.
Yes.
Counselor Copeland.
Yes.
Counselor Menthorn.
Hello to Counselor Sadie and yes.
Counselor McPhail.
Yes.
And Counselor Johnston.
Yes.
Motion passes 7-0. Again, thank you, everyone, for your, your due diligence, and thank you for dealing with the technical issues. Have a great evening, be well, and stay safe.